Good morning, everyone. Sonia, could you let me know when we're ready to begin?
Um, so yeah, this is Sam. I'll be filling in and it looks like there's a call.
Okay, cool. So then we will go ahead and start the May 28th St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. This has been determined that it's not practical or prudent for the Planning Commission and its committees to meet in person or pursuant to Minnesota Section thirteen D point O two. In light of the ongoing pandemic, the Planning Commission will not be present at its regular location and all members of the Commission will attend this meeting by telephone or other electronic means. It's also not feasible for members of the public to attend the meeting at its regular location at fifteen West Kellogg Boulevard. Can we begin the meeting by doing a roll call?
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Here.
Commissioner Rill? Here. Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Holst? Commissioner McMurtry?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Well, I'm not seeing her.
Here.
Commissioner Perryman?
I turned my camera off.
Commissioner Priestley?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Reisberg?
Here.
Commissioner Said?
Yeah.
Commissioner Taya?
Yeah.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Underwood? Commissioner Yang? And Commissioner Ringo Morales?
Here.
So the first item on the agenda is the Commissioner meeting, excuse me, the Chair, the Chair's comments. I don't have any. I'll move on to item two, which is the Director's updates. Louis, do you have any updates for the Commission today?
Good morning, Commissioners and Members of the Public. I don't have any updates today. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to the second portion of the public hearing of the homeless services. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Legal Ledger back in March twenty nine, twenty twenty one, and was sent to the city a wide early notification system with the recipients and other interested parties. I know that we originally had the public hearing two, two sessions ago, so about a month ago, and we had laid it over for additional public testimony to be heard on today's date. Louis, was there another notice published?
Chair, that's my understanding. We, so what the Commission did last time was continued the public hearing through today. So we typically if that happens, it's not that often, but we renotice it. We send a new public hearing notice of the of the new date or the continued date. Yes.
All right. Thank you. And will staff be presenting on anything before we hear from public testimony?
Staff, Bill Durbity on the study is here. I don't believe he has anything to present specifically, but certainly could answer questions.
Well, then I will now open the floor for Commission members to ask any questions for staff. Is there any questions for staff before we begin taking testimony?
Chair, this is Cedric.
Go ahead, Commissioner Baker. Then Commissioner Rill.
I had a question. Will we have an opportunity after testimony to ask staff any clarifying questions?
Be well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rill?
Um, I think it might be helpful if staff outlines the next steps in the process after the meeting closes today, just so that folks understand where we are in the process. I think we have, since we have a lot of new folks on the Commission. I don't even have the dates in front of me, so I just, I would hope that we could provide a little clarity on the timeline.
Um, good morning, Naeda. Commissioner Naeda, I have a question that I don't, I know it wasn't a mandatory thing, but will staff, did staff make any attempt to contact the folk that run that building?
Yes, I understand that that person is here today and will be providing testimony as well.
Okay, great.
Chair, yes, to confirm that the interim Director for Listening House Freedom House is here and understand that would like to provide testimony. In addition, I'll start to the earlier request for the dates. So in terms of the process and Bill Durbity might want to add to this, but so what's going on today is the public hearing will be, is continued. So another chance for, for members of the public to, to weigh in. And so when, when that portion of the meeting happens, individuals will be able to self identify name and address for the public record and testify for a short time. After that, Commissioners are able to, you know, ask questions, clarify information with the assistance of staff. And then public comment as typical is, will be accepted through, you know, usually it's the Monday following the Friday Planning Commission public hearing. In this case, there's a holiday on Monday, so we're kicking that out to Tuesday. So if there's anything that members of public wanted to add, weren't able to come today and testify, they're able to do that via written comment, email or mail. So that, all of that, plus today's public hearing testimony will be referred back if the Commission so chooses to, you know, close the public hearing today, accept comments through Tuesday, refer all of that back to the Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Committee of the Planning Commission, which is the commit, the committee that really dives in deep and looks at zoning text amendments. Like in this case, it's the homeless services zoning study. And so staff will be able to analyze all of that public testimony. You know, determine whether that's information that, that would cause us to make any amendments to what we had, what staff had originally proposed and, and bring a, you know, a new recommendation to that committee for consideration. So it, the, the timeline on that is, is a little bit undeter, undetermined at this point, but certainly within the next month or so, we would be back at the committee having conversation, bringing it back to the full Planning Commission, Commission sometime after that for a decision, a recommendation on text amendments to the City Council.
Okay.
And we can, happy to answer other questions on that if it's, if it's not clear.
I think we can wait till it sounds, looks like there's several people who may be here to provide testimony, so we should move on to that. And then we can ask any questions or Commissioners can ask any questions of staff or provide for clarification when we're done. I will now open up the floor for Commission members. Oh, excuse me. I will now, the following procedures will be used in conducting the hearing. All testimony and questions will be addressed to the Chair. If you're a member of the public that would like to speak during the public hearing, you'll be asked to identify yourself. Speakers should state their name and address for the record before beginning their presentation. All comments must be confided to the topics of the public hearing, which is the proposed homeless services zoning study. Each speaker may speak only once. Again, speakers are requested to address all questions to the Chair. Planning Commission members may address questions to the Speaker and to the staff. You will be limited to no more than three minutes and people who exceed that time limit may have their microphone muted by staff. Please mute yourself during this meeting except for during your three minutes when you're specifically called upon to speak. When the Planning Commission closes the public hearing and refers the matter to the Comp Plan Committee, planning staff will hold the record open for additional written testimony that they receive by four thirty, I believe Louis, Director Paredes said on June first at four thirty PM. If you would like to speak on this item, please identify yourself and include your name. And so I can call upon you at the appropriate style, time. What I would ask is that you either in the, we hit the raise your hand option on, on the Teams app or put your name on the comment box if you're able to. And we will call on people according to the way that they're listed or the way that they pop up and who, who raised their hand first. The conclusion, at the conclusion of the meeting, we can then ask questions of staff as Commissioners. So we will begin the public portion and I see that there's a person who has raised their hand. Mister? Second. Uh, Mister Morg, Mister or Miss Morgan Winard?
Hi, my name is Morgan Winard. I'm, I live at fourteen eighty-three Wynn or in District ten. And I am Medical Director for the Downtown Clinic Part of Minnesota Community Care. I provide medical outreach at Freedom House along with my colleague Kat Donnelly. I just wanted to testify and say that Freedom House is an incredible resource for unsheltered neighbors in St. Paul, especially for folks who really need additional support from, from outreach workers through like Radius and People Inc. This is an incredible resource for the community, providing a safe place for people to be during the day, connecting people with resources. And, you know, this population needs more resources, not fewer. So I really hope that the Commission will consider continuing to keep Freedom House open. And additionally, you know, more support from the city for this population is always better than, than less. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winard. I see Mister Brian Alton?
Mister Chair, Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Brian Alton. I am an attorney. My address is nine fifty-one Grand Avenue in St. Paul. I represent Daniel Parker, the Principal of WW two LLC, which owns the property at two eighty-six West Seventh Street next door to Freedom House. On behalf of Mister Parker, we request that you continue the study of this proposed ordinance and not pass it in its present form. I appreciate the fact that it's going back to the Committee for further review and consideration. The understandably well-intentioned effort to temporarily address the issue of the city's unsheltered population has presented substantial issues for the public health, safety and general welfare. Under the emergency situation dealing with COVID, it was perhaps reasonable to give this a try, but the collateral problems cannot be dismissed. Many of the same problems that have been described to you at the last meeting have occurred on the property at two eighty-six West Seventh. It's a former commercial laundry that was white, Saint, was white wake cleaners and then Saint Crick cleaners. Saint Crick cleaners moved to West Seventh Streets. The property is now vacant. And Mister Parker has been told that his efforts to lease the property or sell it have been impacted by the presence of Freedom House over the past several months. And his value of that property has actually declined as well. So there's more study and change needed to this ordinance to understand the unintended consequences. There should be more review of the conditions which should be placed on approvals, which zoning districts are appropriate, whether the use should be a conditional use rather than a permitted use of right. And there should be a better definition of what a homeless services facility is. There are many, any number of definitions within the zoning code that are analogous to a homeless services facility. They're all under the broad definition of congregate living. Many of the uses that would seemingly have less impact on surrounding property, such as a rooming house are not permitted or are conditional uses in many of the same areas that this ordinance would make homeless services facility permitted as of right. For, again, that's the reason for more study needed to be done. And so in conclusion, we're supportive of helping people in need suffering homelessness, but this owning ordinance in its present form does not accomplish that. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Alton. I'll call on, is there any questions for Mr. Alton? I'll call on Shalilo, Shalini Walia?
Yes, hi.
Um, I'm Stark along with Shalini. I'm the
If we could do one at a time.
Irvine Park Towers at two ninety-one West Seventh. We're directly across the street from the Freedom House. The point that we just wanted to make is that we've been managing that property for over thirty years.
Sir.
For thirty years, we have not had issues with homelessness and crime in the neighborhood. By bringing the Freedom House to the neighborhood as the temporary shelter, that homelessness and, and crime factor has, you know, increased to the point where you guys have had to bring in extra police crews on the street. The Planning Commission is supposed to be here to improve neighborhoods. If this permanent shelter becomes a part of the neighborhood, you're no longer improving the services to the neighborhood. You're causing more crime and homelessness than we had before. That's really my main point. And Shalini has some things as a condo owner.
Well, excuse me?
One thing I'd like to say also that Irvine Park Towers is a high-density multifamily building and you are impacting over one in twenty families in our neighborhood. From our tenants that have explained that to us. Some of our tenants are in fact workers at the hospital, which are our treasured workers, as you know, during this time. And they don't feel safe coming back home to their home and because they're passing by and there's individuals in the streets. Once Freedom House is closed, that they can't even come back to their home because they're being approached with individuals that are doing drugs that are upset that they can't get the services that they require at Freedom House. In addition, we have mothers who are scared to take now their daughter to the bus stop because there are lewd comments.
Ms. Walia?
And when she comes home and she can't be there to pick her up, she's nervous as to how her daughter will get back to her own home. So those are comments straight from our tenants that are very important for you to be aware. The other thing is also that there is such high demand. Is, is this center, is it even appro, is it, I don't feel it's appropriate for the services that you need to offer here. And some in small examples are even when our property manager is walking over to inform the workers at Freedom House that there's a bike being hung on a flagpole that they're not even aware of. It's, it's just an overabundance of work and things that are happening that, that they need to take care of these individuals. But is this the facility, the right place for that? In addition to the impact that it's having on our families? Thank you.
Could, Ms. Walia, can you hear me? Ms. Walia, can you hear me? Okay, we'll move on to the next person. And that would be seeing no other individual. I'll go ahead and call on Ms. Molly Joma.
Hi, thanks for having me today or allowing me to speak. My name's Molly Joma. I'm the interim Executive Director for Freedom House. I oversee both locations. We have one in Dayton's Bluff and then the one at two ninety-six Seventh Street West. We are providing services in the firehouse, the Freedom House Firehouse. It came to be in a partnership with the civilian county, internal stakeholders and provider partners. We're currently serving around a hundred and twenty individuals on average daily. On a day like yesterday that had poor weather and towards the end of the month, we probably saw about a hundred and fifty. Most of the, the guests who, who utilize our services reside in shelter hotel programs and some are indeed unsheltered. There are also several who are housed, but they're in need of supports, socialization and community. We fulfill a need for sleep during the day for individuals who work overnight and those who struggle with sleeping in congregate settings. The primary uses of our facility for people who, who seek our services are the need for rest, the ID and birth certificate procurement, socialization, hygiene, clothing, laundry, storage, food, mail, wifi use and connecting with other service providers. We're open eight AM to eight PM daily. We generally have about five to six staff on at any given time. On top of that, we have one to three volunteers, sometimes more than that, and at least one manager on duty. For all, every morning from eight AM to noon, we have an op duty officer that we have hired as well as in the evening from five or five thirty till nine or nine thirty. We pay for the officer to, to stay after we close to help ensure people have moved on for the evening. Because Listening House, because of Listening House, St. Paul residents have a welcoming place to have their most basic needs met, so they don't have to rely on alternatives such as libraries, skyways, businesses, parks and encampments. People who live in extreme poverty lead very, very public lives. They walk the streets, they take the bus, their conversations, relationships, physical beings are on view all the time. People who are housed, the rest of us, are able to maintain privacy. Our mental health issues, our chemical dependency issues and our maladaptive behaviors are hidden indoors and remain private amongst our inner circles. To hold people who have less to a higher standard is unfair and unreasonable. We talk often about not in my backyard politics. We know what that is. We know what it looks like and how it feels. What doesn't get talked about nearly enough are the, are the people who say yes in my backyard. Yes, this is new and uncomfortable, but yes, I can handle it. Yes, I want a community that takes care of its residents. Yes, we're stronger with you here. Listening House is essential. When the world shut down with the pandemic, we grew. We respond to the need of the community and the community needs us. Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you, Ms. Joma. So, okay, I see Commissioner Moore has a question for you. So I, I had, I stopped you just based on the three minute time limit for each presenter. But I do know that a lot of the Commissioners had wanted you to come provide testimony today. And so several might have questions. Commissioner Moore?
Molly, thank you for your testimony. Thank you for the work that you do in community. I toured Listening House last week and one of your Directors was just phenomenal. My, my question was when I was touring the facility, I was surprised by the comfort level that your volunteers had with the guests. And my question to you is, well, my question to the Director was, how did they maintain that level of comfort with the staff? Was it training or was it through relationship? And I was wondering if you could expound on that for me? And yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. It is through relationship. That is the primary thing we offer. Everything I listed is very important. It's essential. However, it's secondary to the relationship. How we, how we address people, we looked them in the eye, we learn their name and we have a conversation over coffee. That's how everything starts. It is when somebody comes in, it can be overwhelming for a volunteer. It's a stimulating environment. You might see and hear things that you don't see and hear every day. And really, when somebody just sits down and says, how's your day? All of that falls away and we realize we're just a couple of people sitting and talking. And it's the start of those relationships that lead to other things. It's, it's, on this day, I say hi. And a couple of days later, we have another conversation. And then a week later, somebody's saying, hey, can you help me get my ID? Or I'm looking, I'd like to go to treatment. Can you connect me to somebody? It all starts with that relationship. And that's, again, the primary focus. And I think the volunteers respond very well to that.
One, one additional just follow-up question, if I may. Thank you, Commissioner and Director. The there's just so many things floating. I apologize. I, I'll disregard the second question. I thought, thank you.
Any additional questions? For the Speaker? From Commissioners, Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner McMurtry?
Morning, Chair and Director. I would like to add, could you give us more information on the demographics of who you're serving from racial demographics to, if you have this information and any other information such as mental health issues, physical health issues? Do you collect that type of data to give us any other type of?
Thank you. We do collect demographic information via HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System. I don't have specific numbers for you. I can give you a generalization. We are intentional about being low barrier. And so we don't in a, in a trauma-informed world, we don't want to make people explain that they need help over and over again and tell their story over and over again because that is traumatic. We assume when people walk in that they're looking for help and we take them at that word. So I would, I can give you, for this population, for the last set of reports I ran last quarter, it is generally about a sixty percent self-identified black or African American. And breakdown from there, the next group would be white and then Asian, Native American, and then generally biracial or identified as other. And it is primarily male, again, probably around the sixty forty split. And the diagnoses are, are multiple. It is multiple dual diagnoses, sometimes triple with physical, mental and, and chemical dependency. For more specific information, that's something that gets run in reports and it's used for HUD funding and given to the county in the continuum of care.
I have just one more question. How about age range? Just the ages? That's a, I'd like to know the ages that you're serving.
Absolutely. I think the ages sort of is kind of fascinating. Actually, we serve adults. So anyone who's eighteen and older is welcome. We serve adults, so anyone who's eighteen and older is welcome. If you think of a. People who are utilizing our services and most services for people that are unsheltered in the St. Paul area area have this is it, and it takes a while to get there. Some people have family, friends, it takes a while to get to where where they are, where they really need us. We are their people now. And so that that primarily happens, you know, there's a peak around between in the forties, but we serve anyone from eighteen and we have had people into their eighties. And we see all those ages every single day.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you. Two two additional questions. One, can you share any anecdotal stories about your time at the Freedom House? And then second, there was testimony last time that there were no wraparound services. And I categorically disagree with that. When I toured the facility, there was People Inc., two representatives there, and then Eman Care was there providing healthcare services as well. Can you talk about or or yeah, can you answer if there are wraparound services at your facility? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. I will take your second question first. There are wraparound services, it's a primary focus of what we do. It's a, there's a very intentional choice in the services that Listening House provides and that we we do not internally have our own mental health providers, chemical dependency. Those items, if somebody is unable to reside where they're currently residing or they're unable to get to Listening House or Freedom House or they can't be there anymore for some sort of behavior, it's important that they don't lose all those other supports. It's important that just because they can't come doesn't mean that they can't use, work with their outreach worker, housing provider, mental health worker. So we really try to link people externally. So we have, so Radius is there, the Coast Team is there, which is a a group provider, that's the St. Paul Police Department, People Inc., as well as the Sheriff's Department. That's been extremely effective. I can tell you that on one particular day, it was tense, I needed some de-escalation, not only for the people, our guests, but also staff. And I made one phone call to Melissa at the Coast Team and within minutes, I had a officer and two social workers. In their time there, they were able to intervene with a woman who we had seen over and over and over again, who was in a horrible domestic violence situation. And within, I don't know, an hour, a bus ticket had been booked and she was able to get into a shelter out of the city, up north. And she, I saw her yesterday and she is alive and she is well, and that is not the path she was she was heading on. That's wraparound services. Clinic five 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 is there, and I believe Jesse is here. He, he does testing. We've had vaccination clinics. And we are continuing to add more and more weekly, allowing a meeting space for people to work with their providers. It has become an essential part of what we do. Anecdotal stories, there are there are numerous. I would say every day, there is some sort of miracle of sorts and and not so much of a miracle. One individual, I won't use their name. I think this is a pretty powerful story. There was, this winter, it was extremely cold. There was an individual who was basically living between the Safe Space Emergency Shelter and and Freedom House. And they were utilizing the Safe Space Emergency Shelter because they were severely alcoholic and in a really horrible relapse. And even on some of those nights, this individual was not able to go to Safe Space because his alcohol intake was too high. After having coffee a number of times, a number of conversations, one particular night at closing, he grabbed my arm and said, I need help. He said, I'm very messed up, and he had been drinking hand sanitizer. We kept him awake, we kept him after close, several staff remained. We were able to get him to detox, I was able to connect with the treatment program and that he was able to get to post detox. He came back a couple of weeks ago and said, I'd like to volunteer. Turns out this individual came from a town up north, he has a PhD, he's a professor, and he relapsed quite quite profoundly. There were no services for him where he was, and he came here. And now he's back and he's productive and he wants to give back. That's a big one. We've had other individuals who haven't showered in months. When we first opened, somebody came and said, the last shower, this was in January. He said, the last shower I had was when I was in the hospital in August. He came out looking like a completely different person, we gave him clean clothes, his entire image changed. And now he continues to use our services to get clean and present himself differently. I'll leave it at those two for now.
Thank you.
Commissioner McMurtry and then Commissioner DeJoy.
Thanks, Chair. First, I just want to thank you for coming in and presenting to us today. My question is around the relationship and conversations that you may have had with different community members or business owners within that area. Are there opportunities for them to to come and see the facility, to speak with you, to learn more about the work that you're doing and have those conversations happen? Just want to get better sense of what that general relationship and conversation has been between you and and other community neighbors within this neighborhood.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that. Yes, absolutely. We invite anybody, it is an open door, anybody on this call can come in. We encourage a tour, we often think that it's it's a little, once you see what's going on and maybe take some of the the mystique away from it or confusion about what's actually going on in there. And a lot of people have have come through for tours, not all allies. I mean, people are engaged and and they're they're gonna go take a look at what they're, you know, having the issue with. I mean, when we first opened, I met with Tom and Kathy at Tom Reed's. We met in their bar for an hour and a half, and I think we had a pretty productive conversation. And I, you know, we're not gonna fall on the same side of these things, but it's not, it's not a adversarial relationship, I don't think. Now, there's a spectrum of that. I there, I have had resistance from from other people who I have had open relation, open door. Please can we meet, please can we meet, and that that is not happening. The property next door to us, who had somebody speak earlier, again, he's not happy with us being there. However, we'll have conversations, he's willing to let us pick up on his property and try to take care of it the best we can. And so there is, there is a working relationship. And a relationship doesn't mean that we're all gonna get along and and be on the same side of this. I think it's representative of how complex this issue is, and all these conversations are essential. If we weren't having these tough conversations, we're not actually addressing what's going on here. And so I appreciate all the people who have taken tours, who are willing to have a conversation with me, who are looking for solutions beyond just get them out of the neighborhood. And so I I've been very appreciative of that and will continue to be as open as possible. And I will be at any table, in any room, having any conversation that I'm allowed to be at. I like those conversations and appreciate them.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Good morning, thank you, Chair. Granted, this is just a snapshot of one person's observation, and that would be me. Well, two, I was with my spouse. And I wanted to make sure that I had firsthand information. I circled one, it was Sunday afternoon, we circled the outside of the facility of the Freedom House in our car. And there was some of the negative behavior happening that some of the neighbors have shared. I won't go into detail, two men like immediately stepped in front of my car, which was a little concerning, and then they got into traffic. But I understand that that's just individual behavior. But then we we continued on and we circled past the Dorothy Day where there were many people outside as well. Seemed to be slightly different behavior or maybe significantly different. People milling around, sitting outside, catching rides. There was one car that drove up and was giving out, it looked like food items. And, you know, people came up, got their bag, and then just went on. And then we went by the mission and the mission, there was virtually no activity there. So my question is, how much outdoor monitoring and intervention is done outside of your facility? And when your staff sees things like public urination and apparent supposed drug use, that, I mean, suspicious behavior that looks like it could be drug use, people who may be in distress yelling at others? What is done outside? Because I I feel that Commissioner Moore's description of what's going on inside is legitimate. But what I saw outside seemed like it could have been handled better.
Sure, thank you, I appreciate that. So we have cameras that that are overseeing the external part of the building. We do rounds at at the very least hourly, if not more often than that. I think it's important to keep in mind when making the comparisons to Dorothy Day and Union Gospel Mission that they are much larger and they have much more space. There is a whole courtyard and blocks of space for people to be around. Ours is a little bit smaller. The other thing that we fulfill is we have lower barriers. So we are getting some people who aren't allowed at other places. And until, as long as 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 those behaviors don't extend to damaging, hurting themselves or others or the facility in general, they can they can be with us. When somebody is jumping into the street and things like that, we call for assistance if we cannot redirect somebody. Quite often, we are able to redirect somebody. And we and we seek assistance, sometimes it's getting an outreach worker or it is utilizing or off-duty who have formed really great relationships. And and generally know know our guests by name and especially the the smaller percentage who have the hardest time. And a number of our guests don't have access to those other services. And there's always more we could do. I would love to be able to have more staff, more volunteers. Our volunteer ratio is going up. Listening House and Freedom House have been primarily, you know, we we've operated with ten to twenty volunteers a day. With COVID, those all went away. And we are, we are now building back up, so there will be more of a presence. We also, the first week of June, I believe June seventh, we'll be starting with our safety team, who there will be two people on at all times. And part of what they do will be managing the outside and external part of the building. We have taken steps to remove places to sit. We've worked with Metro Transit to remove benches around the the bus shelter. That particular bus shelter, the buses don't actually stop where that bus shelter is, it's actually a block down or half a block down. So any any tweak, we've added garbage cans. We've, it's, it's, it's all day, as nonstop as we possibly can to engage with the outside and external part of the building. Anytime somebody possibly is having some sort of crisis or whatnot and they start walking away, we call on that as well to say, hey, somebody's having a hard time before they get to a local business or before they do walk through traffic, can can somebody intervene? And of course, that doesn't happen always immediately, but we do get, we do get help with that.
Thank you for that.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I add one other thing to that? Okay, I want to address the, what we do when we, if we notice somebody who's urinating and things like that. And I'm not saying that these things don't happen. However, there was a meeting about us being in the neighborhood in November and these same behaviors were reported then. We didn't get there till January. I have intervened in, I think, four different individuals urinating behind our dumpster. Two of them had wild jerseys on. And two of them were carrying boxes of food from a restaurant, they were not our guests. Public urination is an unfortunate issue. At any, if you want to look at cameras on St. Patrick's Day, that was really something. It is not just our guests, this is, this is an overall issue. We are definitely getting the, if it's happening, it's us. But it is not just us, there are not enough public restrooms, right? There, just in general, there are not, there's not enough trash. So I just want to make sure that that's talked about as well.
Chair Ringham Morales.
Is the chair still on? He might have. He might have dropped off.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing him, Commissioner. Let me see. Got a lot of folks on the calls, I have to expand the list here.
No, he's not currently in the meeting. I'm sure he'll be back, though.
Oh, I'll admit him right now.
Sorry, everybody, I got kicked off the Teams meeting. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So I heard the the last portion of that answer. Commissioner DeJoy, do you have a follow-up question?
No, but there was just a little bit of follow-up that Ms. Joma, 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 I'm sorry, had added that public urination is not just.
Yep, I got that.
Okay, that was it.
Is there any additional questions before moving on to the next speaker? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Joma, for your time this morning to come and provide us with additional information with regards to Freedom House. I'll move on to the next person, Ms. Kristen Braun, Ms. Braun?
Thank you, I would like to double-check that you can hear me before I begin.
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Kirsten Braun and I live in Irvine Park Towers at two nine one West Seventh Street with my husband and son. I moved into my beautiful apartment on the, well, I actually don't want to say the floor, in 2016. The stunning views and sounds of the city drew me in. Three of the windows in my apartment, the living room, office, and dining room directly or partially overlook West Seventh Street and the Freedom House. The other faces Truman. We always keep our windows open at night when the weather is nice to enjoy the breeze and soothing sounds of the city. Yes, we sometimes hear sirens or fans loudly cheering after a wild game or revving motorcycles and rowdy bar hoppers. We even have the occasional helicopter land on the helipad that we can see from our window. But it's all part of the excitement of living downtown and we love it. When the Freedom House was converted into a temporary day shelter for the homeless, everything changed. The soothing sounds of the city were replaced with people swearing and yelling and fighting throughout the day and night with some individuals who are clearly suffering from mental illnesses screaming for no reason at all as early as five AM. Throughout the day, when the centers open, all kinds of crazy activities happen. I heard my first two gunshots in the city one morning and watched the police descend on a man from the center. I've watched people throw rocks at building windows and cars driving by and throwing other items into the street. A person trying to destroy the park bench by kicking it and hitting it with a garbage lid. People walking out into traffic with no care about oncoming cars and narrowly being missed. But the constant swearing and yelling and fighting and other loud inappropriate sounds are the worst. When the center closes at eight PM, the workers go home, but many of the homeless people remain, sleeping under the picnic table in the bus shelter in front of the old dry cleaners or even even directly in front of the Freedom House. And it seems like the unpleasant sounds never end. As I write this at eleven fifty-seven PM on a Thursday night, I'm listening to a group of individuals right now who are loudly talking and swearing and arguing right next to the Freedom House. I started recording these occurrences a few weeks ago in hopes of sharing them with the planning commission to help you understand what a burden the Freedom House has become for those of us who live here. You wouldn't believe how many recordings I have. I have so much empathy for the Freedom House Day residents. Everyone deserves a home. But so many of the individuals who are using the services there have severe mental illnesses which can't be fixed with food and shelter alone. They need real help. And those of us who are residents downtown, own or frequent local businesses, or are simply driving by or going for a walk, are not in a position to help. The decision to use such a busy area for the services offered at the Freedom House doesn't make sense. So many people are constantly in this area and just trying to go about their normal lives, but are now put in a situation where they need to hear, see, and directly encounter people who are seriously ill, have anger issues, are yelling and swearing for no apparent reason, or are simply unable to interact with other people in a sensible way. Local businesses are struggling to cope with the challenges they're experiencing because of, of the Freedom House. But living here is so much worse. I don't have the luxury of going home to a different neighborhood at night. This is my neighborhood. My apartment isn't just my home either, I work from home, so I am here all the time and have to constantly cope with the issues across the street. I know there is not an easy solution for finding an alternative location for a day shelter, but I do know this. My family is not going to be able to continue living here if the Freedom House remains. Thank you for your time.
We may have lost the chair again.
Yeah, it looks like we have our chair back. Chair, can you hear us?
Sorry about that, everyone, my wifi keeps coming in and out. I did, uh, hear the last portion of what the speaker was saying, and then, um, it sounded like she was wrapping up her comments. Are there any questions for Ms. Braun? Alright, we'll move on to the next presenter, Mr. Frederick, Brent Frederick.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name is Brent Frederick, and I'm the owner of Parler Bar St. Paul. We are on West 7th, just across the street, and then a little bit further down, close to the XL from the Freedom House. I wanted to comment on kind of Commissioner McMurtry and, and DeJoy's kind of kind of questions that they were kind of alluding to. And, and, and let, and, and I agree with Commissioner Moore as well. We, we were one of those businesses that toured the Freedom House a couple of weeks ago. My business partner and I walked through, and I'll, I'll say that I was impressed with the work that Molly and Sarah are, are doing. I don't think there's anyone on this call that can argue with that this is needed. I know, I know I won't argue that. I, I thought everything inside was fantastic, from what the services you guys had and doing for the homeless was wonderful. So, I do want to start off with saying thank you, Molly. I don't think I met you that day, Sarah wa, was there and walked us around. But we got to meet Trina and your other staff. It was peaceful, and, and I was quite surprised, so I'm glad that I walked through. I, however, do share the concerns with some of the other residents and some of the other business owners. I would say that inside and outside are like day and night. Inside is peaceful and there's support going on, and there's those interactions, and it's, it's great. And then outside, it's almost like it's not the people that you're trying to help. I'm, I'm almost wondering if, if it's attracting these, these other unruly people, and I think it's unfortunate. I know it's unintended. I know that you don't want to disrupt the community, Molly and Sarah and Trina. I know that's not what you're trying to do. However, I think that's, that is what's happening outside. And I, I'm just wondering if there's a way, and I'm, I'm trying to provide solutions and not just talk about problems. I'm wondering if there's a way where we can make the outside feel like the inside somehow. I just don't know what that is. I'm happy to help, but there, there is definitely an issue surrounding that building. And I'm, I'm happy to help in any way, you know, happy to make donations, whether it's money. I wish I had time to volunteer, but I don't. But I, I know that the businesses in the area care a lot about the street. They care a lot about the residents, care a lot about their business, and their employees too. Like, we want to make sure that they're safe. And right now, they're not safe. So, yeah, I think there needs more discussion about what that outside looks like and patrolling it. Because I think if you, if we took care of the outside, then, then all the stuff and the good work you're, you're doing, Molly, can shine. Yeah, and I think that, like, there's a cloud over that building. It's kind of unfortunate. So, yeah, there's good and there's bad right now, right? So I think we just have to keep navigating somehow. I don't know what the answer is, but thank you for letting me talk.
Alright, thank you for your comments, Mr. Frederick. Any questions for Mr. Frederick before moving on to the next speaker? Alright, moving on to Samay Morgan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jean-May Morgan, and I am a resident of 291 7th Street. My unit faces the Freedom House. And that the services provided are critical is not a question. And it's not the problem that many of the homeowners, residents, and business owners have. The location of the property, the damages to businesses nearby, the mental, mental health issues that are being serviced, the overflow of persons outside of the facility, laying down on the ground, walking in the street, the yelling, fighting, violent movements, like mimicking shooting using a machine gun, punching the glass windows and wood on the cleaners next door, and even once an actual shooting, which I heard in my apartment. That is happening at the Freedom House is very difficult to handle as a resident and homeowner in this building and a parent. St. Patrick's Day, of course, is very loud, but it's one weekend. We know to look for that as residents of this building, a very long-term resident. But, um, we're dealing with this daily. And my child and I are constantly afraid. We hear the uproar all day as we work in school from home and when we leave the building, because our homeless neighbors at times lounge on and around the property. They have been, they have been asking to be let into the apartment building. And between services that are being provided, their behavior is unstable. And we do not feel safe. Have other facilities been considered, like the larger space at the unused Sears Building, where the services could also be provided as well? And how will you deal with external safety when it is outside of your business hours? And if this, is this a Band-Aid on a situation that needs bigger care? And finally, is there action that the commission can take to ensure the safety for the permanent residents if against the wishes of so many, the Freedom House remains in use on West 7th? Thank you.
Director Perret, what I'm thinking is if we lose the chair, I can jump in and continue when he gets back. He can just take back over.
Hi, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was speaking, I think I was just muted.
Oh.
Sorry about that. The next speaker is Natalie Gazer. If there's no questions for the last presenter, Ms. Morgan.
Okay. Hi, can everybody hear me? Okay. Alright, I lost my voice a little bit, so. So I'm Natalie Gazer. I currently work as a full-time street outreach worker through Radius Health. So in that role, I provide housing, identification services. I've helped people clear warrants through legal stuff, helped with immigration, so we do all kinds of different stuff. We help with mental health resources. We also help people get connected to treatment. So that's part of my work. The other part of the work I do is part-time worker at Freedom House. Recently, I was employed on the safety team, which is going to be kind of working on some of those things, creating more safety around the building, kind of trying to do more of that de-escalation work for residents that have been maybe fighting outside the building. I think a lot of what we're seeing outside the building is about five to 5% of the actual full residents. There are people, guests, that are coming into Freedom House. The other 95% or 90% are inside, kind of just going about their days and trying to access these resources. When I look at facts around downtown, there's one to two public bathrooms that I believe that homeless people are able to use, because many restaurants, many other places will not let them use those bathrooms. Currently, since COVID, the libraries have been closed, which is a place that many folks would have normally hung out in the daytime. Right now, the city is moving people's camps every single day. Whereas during COVID, camps were allowed to be in different locations for at least five to six months at a time. Right now, the city is taking people every single day. And then when we look at shelter space and places that people may be able to stay at night, there is just not enough shelter space, even with the city adding additional shelter spaces during COVID. There's still not enough for folks. And then there are folks who I work with who stay outside, who have a lot of reasons for wanting to stay outside. And so these are all kind of facts I throw out as maybe a reason that the city would have opened this drop-in center. I also understand that it has not been super pleasant for business owners on the strip because of what you see versus maybe what you know about the guests that come there, different relationships and stuff like that. So I just kind of wanted to speak out some of those facts and provide those at this meeting. And also kind of say that there are 1,400 people on the waiting list, people that are actively working towards housing in the county of Ramsey. And so I think that the drop-in center does need, we do need to do some of that work, especially on the outside. I think there is a lot of stuff going on day-to-day that people see, and then they think, man, what is this drop-in center? But on the inside, there's a lot more being done for folks, working towards housing, trying to get these basic needs met day-to-day that they don't have access to. And so I guess that would be my testimony. I definitely see both sides of, of the, of what we're bringing to the meeting today. So, yeah.
Thank you for that, Ms. Gazer. Is there any questions for the speaker from the commissioners? And then Louise, I do see a hand up, oh, nevermind. No, I do see a hand up from Mr. Tom Reed. I do believe he provided testimony the last time that he was here. Are we allowing testimony again, Louise, or is it a one person per public hearing?
Chair, that's, that's really up to, to you as chair. If you, if you'd like to allow additional testimony, I believe we're allowing two or three minutes per, per person during the public hearing. So it, you know, if you, if you say, well, we're going to allow additional two minutes for, for some, you know, for an individual, then are you allowing the same for others who might be here and would like to expand on it?
Yeah, I think, I think, I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and call on Mr. Reed.
Chair, I have a question for Ms. Gazer.
Oh, Commissioner Holt, go ahead.
Ms. Gazer, you'd mentioned, uh, and I just want to hear you maybe reiterate that a little bit. You said waiting list of 1,400 people, is that correct? So, uh, waiting list of people looking for facilities similar to the Listening or Freedom Houses, is that correct?
That's 1,400 people that are waiting for housing, people that have actively engaged with somebody that have done a housing assessment and that are waiting around, which is one of the reasons that people come to a drop-in center in the day is because they're still homeless, they still don't, haven't accessed that resource of housing, so.
Right, and so just follow-up question on that. Is there a waiting list for facilities like the Listening House or Freedom House? And any idea how large that may be?
Currently, there's only about two drop-in centers in the downtown area, one of them being the Opportunity Center and the other being Freedom House. There is one drop-in center for homeless folks on the east side of St. Paul, People Recovery, uh, through People Incorporated. But that was closed up until last week.
Thank you.
So I will call on Mr. Reed. Mr. Reed, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Good morning, thank you for having me. I am Tom Reed, I have Tom Reed's Hockey City Pub at 258 West 7th Street. And I've been here since 1999. We've had more problems here in the last two and a half months than I had in all the other years combined. I will tell you that. I feel terrible for the residents who live in this area. We have thousands of workers who work in this area, when you consider the hospital, the XL Energy Center, the surrounding two-block area. But we have hundreds and hundreds of people who also live here. The safety factor to me is, is, is utmost. First of all, the services that Molly and her staff provide are wonderful. We, we're not disputing that. What we're disputing is the location of the Freedom House. That is the problem. Because we have so many events that are going to happen downtown St. Paul, with the XL Energy Center opening up, and with the different conferences, and so we have thousands of people, with the hockey games going on right now with playoffs and all that, we have thousands of people coming here. And we see so much panhandling, which I know is legal, but it, it's annoying to our customers who come in here. The safety factor is critical. When I hear the people in the tower talking to me constantly about their children, how they're afraid to go out, and they can't go to the bus stop, and people urinating. I have video of people defecating in my parking lot, urinating in my parking lot, doing drugs in behind the dumpsters, doing all kinds of things. And it, it, it's constant, it's every day. I should be able to run my business the way I see fit. And I've done that for 22 years. And what I'm experiencing right now, and what my customers are experiencing, is, is a slap in the face to us. One of the commissioners said last time that all we care about is the bottom line. Let me tell you, that is not true. We care about St. Paul, we care about the community, but we need the safety factor. It's the location of the Freedom House is the problem. Well, the services they provide are wonderful, and we appreciate that, and these people need help, and we understand that. But the location is not right for this area. This is the largest entertainment area in St. Paul. When you look at the restaurants, you look at the XL Energy Center, you look at everything we have downtown, and it brings hundreds of thousands of people here on an annual basis. And to have to put up with this is not right. I've talked to the Director of Security for the NHL, who handled Minnesota, and they've had to call the police out sometimes because of panhandling and the annoyance of the, the people around here from the Freedom House and homeless people is, is, is critical to what they can get there at, at the XL Energy Center. And I also know that people have said they are not coming down to St. Paul until they feel safe again. And right now, they don't feel safe. When I have young kids, little boys and girls, come in here with their moms and dads and have to cross the street because they're afraid to walk by the Freedom House because of the, the screaming, the hollering, the fighting constantly. The police have done a terrific job down here. But when, it's like when you drive a car and you have a police officer behind you following you, you go the speed limit, you do everything proper. Once the police car moves away, you speed up, you do what you want to do. And that's what happens here, too. So I would hope that, that you would really reconsider moving this or making more facilities available to them in some other location. But right now, it's not
Mr. Reed?
For us, for, for our, our customers, and certainly for our business owners.
Mr. Reed?
Millions of dollars to make this city helpful.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comments for Mr. Reed? Or questions? Thank you for your comments, Mr. Reed. Uh, and, um, we, we did Thank you for your comments, Mr. Reed. And we, we did hear those comments last week from you, and we appreciate you coming back. We know this is really important to you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Alexis Myers.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you. Yep.
Okay, so. My name is Alexis Myers and I also work for Radius Health. I, I, I work in partnership with the Metro Transit Police to provide homeless, or services to our unsheltered population. I know that I've heard a lot of people say that you understand the services that we provide are important, and I would just ask that you allow me the space to provide the services that I do. I think that unfortunately, every day, more and more, I hear that services and resources for my, the folks that I serve are being taken away. And I know, and I hear and I understand that there are concerns in the neighborhood, and I just think that there are different solutions that need to be talked about. And I don't know if this is the space to do it, but I do think that if we could think outside the box and, and maybe just, you know, really, really believe that the services are important and part of believing that the services are important are, are allowing us the space to, to, to serve our folks. So thank you.
Is there any, Ms. Myers? I'm sorry, my, can people hear me?
Yes.
All right. Sorry, my, kicked me off again. Ms. Myers, I, I missed what you said, but I'm sure the other commissioners did hear. Are there any questions for Ms. Myers? All right, seeing none. I, I do see Megan.
Hey, everyone. I wanted to speak from my position. I'm a St. Paul resident in the downtown area. And hello?
Can you start with your name and address, please?
Oh, my name is Megan Dunn. My address is one nine four Charles Avenue. I'm also an outreach worker, and so I just wanted to speak to the way that I would wanna see my neighborhood addressed, I guess. I very much value Freedom House and everything that goes on, around it. I, I see it in different areas. I see it on my street as well. And I just would wanna protect the spaces that we're providing for people to go and get services. And I think it's a long walk for all of us to see the safety for everyone that we want. And Freedom House definitely provides safety to a lot of people as well. I know for my neighbors, I have neighbors with children. And I've seen them engage with people that are unsheltered and walk by fine. I see people be friendly and say hello, and I think that goes a very long way. I've had reports from my clients feeling threatened by people surrounding Freedom House, business people and residents too. So I think it's all just us trying to work together the best that we can with the spaces that we're provided for everybody to feel safe and feel welcomed. So thanks, thanks for my time.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions for the speaker from Commissioner? All right, seeing none. Now I do see Ms. Joma has her hand up. I, I don't know, Louise, if we can have her speak again. I called on Mr. Reed because he provided testimony last time. And so could you direct us on, or me, on whether Ms. Joma should just provide her comments via written submission before next Tuesday? We will still have an opportunity to review them, or if I, given that I called on Mr. Reed, if I should call on her now again?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a, a right or wrong answer, Chair. I mean, the, the procedures are what, what you stated at the beginning of the meeting. So if you'd like to, in your capacity as Chair, call on her. I, I don't know if commissioners have a specific question for her that they'd wanna address, her to address, you know, at this point, that might be another approach.
Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. I, I think based on precedence, I would ask for submission through a, a letter of submission through any more written testimony. And, and my rationale for that is if this is open up, then it makes others that have already provided any type of comments or public comments. We would, to me, equitably need to also open it back up to them as well.
I agree. I see Commissioner Grill.
This is Commissioner Grill. And this question may be directed back. So it, it may open that door. I don't know. When we had the city in person two weeks ago for the meeting, and they gave the presentation on efforts to mitigate some of the, some of the behavior discussed out on the street, one of the things that came up and one of the questions I had at that point was around public restrooms and, you know, had there been a discussion about us adding additional facilities outside so that some of these things that we, we can solve or that we could do some, we could do some work on. And the city mentioned that that hadn't been a very receptive, or that the, the neighborhood hadn't been very receptive to that suggestion of something like porta potty or something provided. And I guess my question would be for the director of the facility, were you involved in that conversation?
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
So are you asking that she respond to this via written submission?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I'm just wondering if they were involved in the, the conversations around adding portable restrooms outside and, and what the, the facility's thoughts were on that.
Okay. So I, I do agree with Commissioner Baker. I think if, I allow Mr. Reed, and I, and I think Commissioner Perriman noted that Mr. Frederick also spoke twice based on a month ago and then again today. I just, I thought it was fair to allow them to speak based on the fact that we're having a public testimony hearing today. But we, we did hear from the director of the Freedom House. It was my intention to call on her last so that they, they, she, they would have the opportunity to answer any questions or address any issues that were addressed by members of the public. When I called on her, she was the last person that was listed. And then after she spoke, a bunch of other people signed up to or raised their hand to speak. So I would just ask the, I, I saw that she had additional comments or issues that she wanted to point out. And so I would ask that she submit them via written submission. And I see Commissioner Grill has a, a question that I would like to know the answer to with regards to the porta potty situation and what type of obstacles her, her organization ran into and trying to put those in the city. Whether it was coming from, whether it was coming from the neighborhood as to, as to having other porta potties or facilities for individuals to use the restroom so that they wouldn't, so that individuals would use the Freedom House. If they are urinating out in public, could have a, a, a safe and clean place to do that in instead of as various business owners testified or provided information in their parking lots and whatnot. So I, I would also like to know the answer to that. But I see, I will call on any additional person that would like to provide testimony that has not already spoken today. I see Sarah. Sarah, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to raise a question. I am Sarah Freedom. I live nine five three Sheffer and am the External Relations Director at Listening House slash Freedom House. And in response, it's come up a couple of times, so I'm wondering if someone on the city or possibly Bill is able to speak to why this location was chosen. It's been a kind of a recurring question. And if there's a easy answer or easy way to point to that answer, I think it might provide some clarification for folks.
All right, thank you for that question. We will turn to Mr. Dermody or to Louise. Louise, would you like to answer that now?
Let me, Chair, let me try to clarify. So I understand the question. So, so the question was why the specific building facility where Listening House is located now, why that was chosen? Is that, was that the question, like by the city? Or?
Right. There's, there's been some testimony that has asked why was that specific site chosen? And possibly from the feeling it might not be the, the best solution. And I just wondered if there was some testimony available to speak to that. And that's what, that was what Molly was, I, I, that was what Molly, well, excuse me, Molly wasn't trying to do testimony. She was trying to ask if there was some info that could be shared about that.
Gotcha. So from the city side, what, yeah.
Correct.
So I, thank you, Chair. I, I might ask that, or just note, note that we have joining us as well our Deputy Director of Department of Safety Inspections, Travis Bistado, who has offered to be here to, to help with any questions. DSI has been much more involved on sort of the, the property kind of disposition and, and lease strategy negotiations. Although our, our department and PD has been a bit involved as well. Travis might be the best prepared to, to try to elucidate that on that question, if not, if not Bill, if he has more information. But so it, I'm not sure I have the answer, but I just wanted to note that, not to put you on the spot, Travis.
No, I appreciate that, Louise. Good morning, everyone. My name is Travis Bistado. I'm one of the Deputy Directors for the Department of Safety and Inspections. To kind of cut to the chase, it's really, I, I think it circles back to four primary reasons why this location was selected. First, it was an underutilized city facility. The, the fire department had their own plans to vacate the location. So we knew it was gonna be readily available to explore options to support the, the huge spike in unsheltered individuals that we were seeing in the near downtown area. The location itself was close to nearby encampments. So, you know, obviously, most of the folks that are living in an unsheltered encampment don't have great transportation means. So something that's within walking distance made sense at the time. The location itself is near a lot of additional service providers like Safe Space, like the Catholic Charities Campus. And then, you know, I think the last reason is, at least off the top of my head, is its location and proximity to, to public transportation. So the bus lines and light rail services. So those kind of four reasons are, are why this location seemed like an opportunity at the time. And I can take further questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bistado. So we, we, we're not gonna be taking questions from community members. I, I was gonna wait, but thank you for providing that clarification. I'll call on another speaker if there is any more. So I see Megan raised her hand. Is, is this the same Megan that already provided testimony this morning?
Yes.
So that would, I would just ask that any additional comments that you submit via written submission by Tuesday at four thirty now?
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional person who has not already spoken today? And then final call, any additional person from the public who would like to provide their input as to this study? All right, seeing none. I will turn it to the, my fellow commissioners to see if there's any questions that they have for staff. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair, and appreciate everyone that provided public testimony. Hearing your perspective has been, of course, helpful, always helpful. Ultimately, I'm going to ask a question, and it is to staff, but I wanted to say before that, over these two sessions of public hearings on this topic, I have appreciated the perspectives that have come, that have been. I appreciated the perspectives and at times I've been frustrated. And I think one of the reasons for my frustration is, and I think others may have sensed it as well. I'm trying my best to do my job well on the commission and not be frustrated by how people characterize those that are considered in this homeless population. And I don't think it has been helpful. I, I will appreciate how some residents and/or business owners have really had, looked at this and thought about the humanity of these people, and I appreciate that. And then at other times, I do feel like there is a disregard for the humanity of this population that definitely needs support. And so saying that, I am trying to make sure that I don't just consistently be frustrated by what I'm hearing and that, but also understand that there is a problem and support is needed. And so with that, I'm trying to think through kind of what's at hand for us here on the Planning Commission and the text amendment. And I'm thinking about, you know, can there be a both and in this situation? Is there a way for us to acknowledge that the city has done a lot with its unsheltered encampments? And Listening House has done a lot, and we're hearing it in a lot of the public testimony of what's happening internally. And there's a lot of things that the city and Listening House and others haven't been able to mitigate. And I am not saying that it is just the fault of those entities. But I do think that we're hearing from residents and also business owners saying that something different and/or more should still be done. And so I'm thinking more of a both and approach. How do we support the residents there without demonizing organizations? And also demonizing the residents. So my question then, my question is then to staff. Understanding kind of our role as the Planning Commission and also the text amendment, is there a way to look at potentially? I'm looking for options, I guess, staff members, on what we can do with, maybe it's the proximity to the overnight shelters or possibility of this being a permanent site, broaden it. And it's not because it, it is because the support is needed for the humanity of the, those that are receiving services at Listening House. And also for the support of the residents and business owners that are there. So I'm asking staff And also so for the support of the residents and business owners that are there. So I'm asking staff. Um is there a way for us to look at what we can do as the Planning Commission? Um that kind of gets at a both and type of an approach. I will definitely ask uh Chair, uh Mr. Dermity and also Director Perera if he has any thoughts.
Well, thank you for those comments, Commissioner Baker. And I think uh probably a lot of commissioners feel that same way uh in terms of. Hearing both sides of the issue and sort of feeling uh frustrated is the term that you used with. How do, how to solve, how to find a solution to this problem. And so I'll turn it over to Director Pereda and or Mr. Dermity.
Chair, this is Louise. I will start and probably quickly turn it over to uh to Bill. But I just wanted to remind uh the commissioners and uh the members of the public here. Um what, what we're considering. So that, so again, this is the Homeless Services Zoning Study. And it proposes a set of text amendments to the zoning code that would recognize a new land use that's not currently in the code. Um and so as part of that, we have to determine with the new land use where um. In which zoning districts uh that use might uh be allowed to locate, be permitted to locate. And in addition to that, what additional standards, if any, should go along with that use? And so the proposal on the table, I believe Bill has the, the, there's a, a map that shows current locations. Um uh under the current proposal, rather. Essentially, what the current proposal does is it recognizes that this new use, this daytime services use. Under uh many zoning districts uh that are business or uh traditional neighborhood or, or industrial or downtown. You know, above, I believe it's sort of at like at the B two, T two. Um uh level of intensity. Um and it alls, there's also a standard in there that says. Uh uh you know, proximity to overnight shelters and emergency housing facilities. Um I believe it's a half mile. Um yeah, so Bill is showing it on the screen. Um there are probably um other components here to mention, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Bill unless um. Uh there's any other questions.
Mr. Dermity?
Yeah, not much to add. It just basically comes down to uh what zoning districts is this permitted in? Uh is it permitted by right or with a conditional use permit? Um and what are the standards, including the half mile uh distance requirement from emergency housing or overnight shelters? There could be additional conditions too, if the, if the commission um deemed it appropriate. So those are, are kind of the questions before you. Um the definition doesn't seem to be of issue. Uh everyone kind of a- agrees with the definition is. So it's more about these uh the zoning districts, the presence of a CUP or not. And what conditions or standards you would want to uh uh attach this new use. That's all in your purview. And this is a, you know, this is a reminder, this is not an application by Freedom House. This is. Um rewriting the zoning codes. That's a, a legislative act. Um you know, as long as you're acting reasonable. You know, and following the city policy, the comprehensive plan, it's all in your purview. This isn't like a. An application where we have very specific standards that are either met or, or not met. Um it's a, a broader type of uh decision for you uh on, on this zoning study.
So a follow-up question on that, Bill, and then I'll call on the two commissioners that have their hand raised. To what, because it almost, to me, it seems like this is being put on Freedom House to solve. And it, it almost seems like it's not. From the, the testimony that was provided in terms of the services that they provide inside their facility. Is very different than what is occurring outside. Um and it, it seems unreasonable to expect them. You wouldn't ask a restaurant to make sure that people. Uh you know, once they leave the restaurant, to, to somehow care for them. So it, it seems unreasonable to also ask Freedom House to spend resources outside of. So my question is. To what extent can we? Include something that makes the city responsible for providing these additional services? Provided that this new zoning is going into place, if it was to be put into place.
Um Chair, Ronan Morales, Commissioners, uh that is a, a difficult question to answer. Um you know, I, I don't think I could do it justice, uh you know, with an immediate. Response. There are a lot of factors in our, our zoning code and our. Comprehensive plan that you may wish to consider when thinking about that. Uh as it moves forward to, to committee. The one thing I would say though is. This is different than a restaurant situation where we are all very familiar with restaurants. Um there are many of them throughout the, the community. Uh this is a new use that you don't find very often. Um and the focus is on Freedom House because they're the only ones who do it at, at this scale. Um you know, they're the reason that a new definition is needed. So um. Yeah, there's nowhere else really to look uh as far as your decision on the zoning code, other than Freedom House and, and their uh. Sister site Listening House up in Dayton's Bluff. So uh that's, that's the reason why uh at. I think a lot of folks who are, who are uh looking at this, planning commissioners and the general public are focusing on Freedom House because it's. It's the one example that we have.
So sorry, follow-up question. So would it be out of the question? To in the code, provide that the city must provide porta potties within a certain location, a certain radius of Freedom House? If we're, if the city is going to zone this to allow for facilities like Freedom House?
Uh I'm Chair, I, I'm sorry, I wouldn't be able to answer that question. There's a financial component to that. Um I, I could try to get a better answer for, for the commission before that, before this comes back, but I couldn't answer that right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dermity. So I see Commissioner Hulse has a question. Commissioner Hulse? Commissioner Hulse?
Yes, hi. Uh are we able to, Bill, are we able to pull that map up again, please? My question is around um the, the, the half mile limit. I believe it was mentioned that to be within walking distance. Um and sort of my question would be, um the people that provide these services. Um shouldn't we um make it a little bit broader uh so that um wherever the best. Location may be, may not necessarily be immediately next to um a, a more of a, a emergency housing and overnight shelter. Um and um you know, and I look, for example, at the one in the Highland area right here and at the zoning. I, it seems like this would just give very, very, very few uh opportunities for locations that might actually work, right? We've got uh zoning areas here that, that if we filled in the boxes on where it's possible to put. This type of facility would be very small. So I, and there's other neighborhoods that need these services. So. I guess I'm not quite understanding why we'd have the half mile uh uh restriction. And why not open that up to either the whole city or a much larger radius?
Uh is that a question for Mr. Dermity?
Sorry, yes, that was a question for Bill, please.
Um Chair, Commissioner Hulse, uh that's a good question. That's, you know, that's. That's a good question for yourselves. Um moving forward, the, the logic between, behind a half mile was. Um to make sure that these facilities are within walking distance of where people may be sleeping or, or living. Uh as their temporary residents. Um that's not the only logic you could apply to it. So um that's, that's a good consideration to, to think about moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Uh I guess my own comment on that then would be um that there are people that would need these facilities that are maybe not necessarily. In uh emergency housing. We know we have people in our city that experience homelessness. Um but are maybe in a car or uh at a friend's house or completely unsheltered. So I, I do think, just, just throwing it out here for the Planning Commission, that, that if that can be changed, that we should consider changing that half mile. Distance from the facility. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Chair. Um as you can probably tell, I have ve- very strongly held beliefs regarding this issue. Uh but I want to quote Fred Rogers, uh the late Fred Rogers, "Listening is where love begins." Listening to ourselves and then to our neighbors. And um I've heard that the testimonies from people in, in community, the residents and business owners. And so um trying my best to um uh as Commissioner Baker said, uh create, create a win-win of both and. Um my, my question is, are we able to add language for twenty-four seven security for this location? And the context for that is, I think about the Starbucks that's off of Snelling. And the requirement that they have an officer direct traffic during their um hours. And so. Um in thinking in context of the theme that I've heard today from the listening is safety as a common thread. Um is that something, eh, language that we can add? Thank you.
Uh Chair, Commissioner Moore, I, I believe that is question, that is language you could add. If you see a reasonable connection um from, you know, the, the external factors. That this site has on, on other places, that is the type of condition you could consider adding to, to the zoning code.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. It, is it, is this the proper time to add that or, or make a motion to add that language to? This uh amendment?
But it wouldn't be, so what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be taking this back to committee. It's going to be going back to the Complan Committee, uh in which point the commissioner, who was part of that committee, can make a motion to. Amend uh the requirements at that time. Um if you're not a member of that committee, when you are, when it comes back to the Planning Commission and you would like to make a motion for that amendment. You could do that when it comes back to the Planning Commission, uh if you're not a part of the Complan Committee. Director Perera?
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, Chair, uh I just wanted to comment real quickly, if it's helpful. That, that's, these sort of ideas are good to get on the table for staff uh to hear, you know, in light of what we've heard is of the public testimony. If we have ideas like this for staff to consider. Um to put them out on the table now would be helpful, even if not in a formal way, like via a motion to your point. Um because we'll be trying to figure out what to do with what we've proposed and, and. And how to change it if, if we are going to change it. So um you know, the question about um, you know, temporary uh. Bathroom facilities or security or things like this, like what, what are ways to um help manage? Um the use uh and strike that right balance um. Uh for this, this use through, throughout the city uh where proposed. To, to respond to the, to uh the, some of the concerns that have been raised.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Uh good morning, Chair. Again, I have, uh excuse me. To add to the question about the adding a um. Some kind of uh police officer to direct traffic. And because I'm so new to this um commission and. So one thing I would like to know is that does Starbucks do a, or did the city require the Starbucks to do steady? Because I, I am not understanding the traffic issues. Is it only when the games are, are, you know, because it, it, it will be a cost? So is it only when, you know, is it the traffic issues from nine PM to twelve AM? What are the traffic issues? Uh what are the peaks so that it, because it will be a cost if you hire someone to do that? Um so I, I want to know some more about that issue. Can, if the staff can kind of find out what are the traffic issues and when are the peaks? When is that happening so that if we need to hire someone or they need to hire someone, that they have some information? So that is one of my questions.
Mr. Dermity, um wa- was Starbucks on snelling your project or was it someone else from staff?
It was not my project, Chair. Um and, and I do not remember those specifics. I'd have to look them up.
Yeah, I, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, Commissioner Mitchell. I, I do remember that there was a study that then determined at, at what points. Um what times the Starbucks should have someone help direct traffic. Um but I don't remember the specifics, but I do hear your point. And that the expense, and that this kind of goes to my point earlier, that it seems like Freedom House is getting. The blunt of, of, of having this. Facility at the particular location, um when in reality, it seems like it's a larger city issue of city services. That city, that the city should provide. So yeah, I, I, I hear you on your comments. Commissioner O'Reilly?
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great, thanks. Um I uh, I have a question for Mr. Dermity and I apologize if I read it before and have since forgotten. Um but can you um tell us or remind us if it's in the report? Um any research that you or other staff did regarding what other communities that have um maybe significant homeless? Um populations, people experiencing homelessness uh and what they do for their dropping in centers. I'm thinking about places that are, you know, often warmer than here, so they have sort of longer term parts of the year. Um warmer um parts of the year. So places like San Francisco or Washington DC. Um places that have, you know, provided uh services for those experiencing homelessness sort of year round. Um and if not, perhaps that's something to look at when we're talking about whether there are conditions. Um and whether this should be allowed in, you know, perhaps more places uh than. I hear, I think it was Commissioner Hoods. Um uh no, I guess it was Commissioner um. But gentleman from, I think it's uh this, the north end. Hulse, yes, who talked about, you know, you look at the map and you can't see any um, there's not a lot of places. And so I'm wondering if maybe we open that up to something to think about. So my question basically is, have you looked at other cities, what they do? And if not, um is that something that you could do between now and the time this comes back to either the committee or the commission? Thank you.
Uh through, through the Chair, Commissioner Riley, Commissioners. I did actually have a chance to scan other cities zoning codes on that question. About ten other cities, specifically Minneapolis, Chicago, New York, uh Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, Phoenix, Los Angeles. And maybe I'm forgetting one other. And none of them address this type of use in their zoning code. That's not to say they don't allow it. Maybe they handle it some other way through uh, you know. A statement of clarification from their zoning administrator, or maybe it's just. Always appearing on a, on a campus that's providing other um services, you know, such as overnight shelter and. Overnight shelter clearly allowed in just about every uh major cities zoning code throughout the country. But this specific type of daytime services, I could find no mention of it in any of those peer cities zoning codes.
Thank you for that uh response, Mr. Dermity. Is there any additional questions for staff from the Commissioners? Alright, seeing none, I would turn it over uh to Commissioner Grill. As the Chair of the Complan for a motion to. Close the public hearing, keep the written portion open until Tuesday at four thirty and then re-refer back to the Complan Committee.
Alright, this is Commissioner Grill. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and leave the record, public record open until four thirty on June first. And then have uh the materials referred back to the Congress of the Native Land Planning Committee.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Grill. Is there a second?
I second.
Who was that? I'm sorry. Made by Commissioner Grill, second by Commissioner Thomas. Um is there any additional discussion on the motion? So seeing none, Sonja, could we get a roll call?
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Tagia?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood? Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
And Commissioners Ringo and Rouse?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So that the public hearing will be closed on this matter. Written testimony could be submitted until Tuesday, June 1st at 4:30. And then it will be come back to the Comm Plan Committee where we will have additional discussions about it. Discuss a lot of the proposals that were done to, made today. And then it will come back to the full planning commission so that we can make a referral to a city council. Thanks everybody who took the time to come and listen today and provide testimony. And you can stay updated on what's happening with this on the website about when it will be heard again by the planning commission. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is zoning committee, Commissioner Baker.
Thanks Chair. The upcoming site plan review meeting is scheduled for June 3rd. It has three items. First is PPL Emma Norton Residence Highland Bridge Lot 2 Block 1, which is new residential. Second is PPL Neely Francis Court Highland Bridge Lot 2 Block 1, which is also a new residential. And lastly Highland Bridge Medical Office Building 2270 Ford Parkway, which is new commercial. We have two items for the upcoming zoning committee meeting. 520 Payne Avenue rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial to T-2 Traditional Neighborhood and 1648 Bush Avenue, which is a reestablishment of non-conforming use as a duplex with reduced parking. So, we had two items for the May 20th zoning committee meeting. First item was 240 Sycamore Street West. This is a conditional use permit for motor vehicle salvage operations. The site has operated as an auto recycling, auto repair, vehicle storage and salvage use lot since the 1990s. The current operator is seeking a license to operate as a motor vehicle salvage dealer. The site plan submitted by the applicant demonstrates that the site is completely fenced in with space for car reception area, salvage vehicle processing, a work area, a cargo and loading ramp, parking and a small office area. The North End Neighborhood Organization, so District 6 Council, which is their district council, recommended approval for this application. Staff found that all conditions were met for this application. There were no letters in support of the application and three letters in opposition. There were two people who spoke in favor of the application and one person who spoke in opposition during the public hearing. I do want to highlight that the opposition to the application really hinged on understanding any remediation efforts for any few, further or future contamination on the site and the current owner operations on the site and if it was legal or not. There was much discussion on the application and, and understanding of the DSI's role and the planning commission's role with a lot of those concerns on what was happening on the site. The zoning committee voted 7-0 in favor of this conditional use permit for 2040 Sycamore Street West for the motor vehicle salvage operations with two conditions. Final plans approved by the zoning administrator and that the applicant must comply with all state, county and city licensure requirements to ensure that the property does not pose any environmental and/or public health hazards. And that was our first item, Chair.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Baker. Any questions regarding the motion coming out of committee? And I'm just seeing Ms. Mohan's comment that District 6 did send a letter of support for 240 Sycamore Street. One second. So the motion is to approve, Sonya, could we get a roll call please?
Commissioner Baker?
You're muted.
Sorry, thank you, I've just been talking, yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes, and it's Samantha, not Sonya, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sorry.
That's alright. Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Tagia?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, so that motion is approved for a conditional use permit at 240 West Sycamore. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks Chair, our last item is 733 Grand Avenue. This is a conditional use permit for a bank drive-through service lane. Until March 31st, 2020, the site has operated as a Pier 1 import site since the 1990s. Except for a temporary retail tenant in the fall of 2020, the tenant space has remained vacant. The applicant is proposing that the building be divided into two tenant spaces. One potential tenant for the building is Cooley Bank. Cooley Bank has a current location at 742 Grand that does not have a drive-through service. A Cooley Bank has determined that a drive-through service lane is a convenient or convenience amenity required to better serve their customers and to be competitive with other banks in the area. Their lease is contingent upon having a bank drive-through service lane at the subject property. The applicant proposed to maintain the parking lot's existing general footprint with some changes to the configuration. Staff found that all conditions for this application could be met with modifications from the commission. There was no one who spoke in favor or against this application during the public hearing. There were 11 letters in support and six letters in opposition of this application. There was discussion among the zoning committee about the allowance of these types of CUPs for this type of business in this location, in the density of this location. There was also discussion about the highest and best use of the property and opportunities for the residents. The zoning committee voted 6-0 in favor of the conditional use permit at 733 Grand Avenue for a bank drive-through service lane with modifications of standards for lane distance from residential property and vehicular egress distance from residential property. And with two additional conditions, final plans approved by the zoning administrator and that the site shall be managed to prohibit vehicular queuing for the bank drive-through service lane backing up into any public right-of-way. The Chair would also defer to any of my colleagues that were on the, that are on zoning committee, that wanted to provide any perspective that they felt like potentially would be helpful at this time.
Alright, is there any additional comments from a Commissioner on the zoning committee? Seeing none, is there any comments on the motion or discussion on the motion coming out of committee? Which is to approve with conditions to your conditional use permit for a drive-through service lane at 733 Grand? Commissioner Holst?
This is Commissioner Holst, sorry I don't have the camera on, I just, connectivity is a little dicey today, it seems. I'll be voting to oppose this based on finding 2A, 2B and therefore 3E, which are the conditions that are not met, having to do with the distances. 60 feet I think is required, 49 in one, in one area and 30 feet from 60 down to 35 feet, I believe in another area. This, this is, we're coming up against a, you know, a drive-through type situation again. I think it, 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 it's, the neighborhood should be a walkable neighborhood. If you look at the site plan on this, the exit for the drive-through looks incredibly dangerous to me on Grotto Avenue. We've got cars lined up against the north side of the building and therefore the driver sits on the left side also. So coming out of that on the Grotto, the visibility is awful towards the sidewalk there. And I think puts significant, uh, puts, puts significant risk towards pedestrians, cyclists, children, whoever that might be on that area, the visibility coming out of there is, is, is pretty bad. I would add, I have some concerns about the, the speaker that might be there. We marked the condition acceptable just based off of what the applicant said. There's noise and then there's noise, right? So car noise or train noise or things like that can kind of fall into the background. But sort of a squawk box type noise is a lot more, more disruptive. I did notice that the neighbors in close proximity, there's definitely some opposition to having the drive-through in there. We've had lots of, I mean, car, you know, we brought it up today, Starbucks. The other problem is too, this, this, this doesn't change if they get bought out by a national chain, right? I mean, the volume that they have there is proposed, I think it's optimistically low. But even so, that use could change, it could be a large bank. And I guess I do have one question is, if this were to change from a bank to say a coffee store, would the drive-through still be permitted? But regardless of that answer, I'll be voting no today.
So is the presenter from staff able to answer Commissioner Holst's question?
Yes, thank you Chair and thank you for your question, Commissioner Holst. So the conditional use permit is specifically for a bank drive-through service lane. So it would not be able to be a restaurant, you know, a fast food drive-through lane or anything. It would specifically only be a bank drive-through.
Alright, thank you for your response on that, that was a good question I had, or a question I had, but my vote will still be no, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Baker?
Thanks Chair, I almost wanted to defer to Commissioner Grill before I speak, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Grill, then maybe we'll come back to Commissioner Baker.
This is Commissioner Grill, I really appreciate Commissioner Holt, Commissioner Holt's comments. I, I don't want to speak for everyone on the zoning committee, but I don't think there were very many people that sat for the presentations that were, were particularly thrilled about this use. That was a lot of our discussion. The owner of the property is very limited by the current Grand Avenue overlays and the restrictions on what you really could do on this particular property. And they are, I, I don't want to speak about this too incorrectly, but they are not changing the footprint of the property. They are adding a drive-through to the back and purchasing a building basically across the street from their currently providing banking services. And we were having a hard time penalizing the purchaser of the property for doing something that they're allowed to do on that particular plot of land. I, I think we all have higher and better uses that we'd love to see there, to have a denser development, to have some, you know, something that's a little more mixed use. But because of the overlay and because of the requirements on that particular piece of property, they are building what they're allowed to build, in, in my opinion. Yes, the drive-through does require a cup, but it did not seem to be radically, trying to find the word here, but radically out of character for the development that it's also being surrounded by. And so I had a hard time finding things that I felt were legally defensible as reasons to deny the application. I'm speaking as myself in that regard, but I know there were other people that had similar feelings.
Commissioner Tagia?
I wanted to echo Commissioner Grill's comments and say that essentially I feel exactly the same way about this. This was in, in my district, in District 16. And when, there, there's been a sort of a process of extensive public engagement consideration that's happened for months around this particular development. Originally, it was going to be a two-drive-through lane development and they wanted a drive-through for a restaurant as well. The community vociferously opposed that and, you know, for all the reasons we would, we would do that. And, you know, the applicant did engage publicly, did listen to those concerns expressed by the community and did withdraw the proposed second drive-through lane for a restaurant in the secondary space at that property. And proceeded with this one, I think relevant to at least the community's views were that several banks along Grand Avenue already have drive-through locations and that this application does not change the distinct curb cuts. So that, that is currently a parking lot, it's been a furniture store for 30 years. Those two curb cuts have always been there and I think the view was potentially that essentially the, the, the traffic impact in terms of that, that condition at the exit to Grotto is definitely a concern, a concern that, that is in the district council letter and a concern that frankly has not been addressed. And I think I'd agree with Commissioner Holst in wanting a better answer to that egress and the safety of that egress. But then I also agreed with, with, with the analysis in the staff report that said that in this, in, in this case, it's reasonable to modify the condition because there's an existing building there and it, it's almost impossible to move the drive-through lane further south without, you know, without literally demolishing part of the building.
Commissioner Riley and then Commissioner Hood?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to note for the rest of the Commissioners that I was probably the one person in the minority who is relatively supportive of the entire concept. I think we have, it's important for us to remember that pedestrians aren't always just people on foot and people using drive-throughs aren't always people who can't, who could otherwise get out of their vehicles. And so I think that given the, the existing building structure, the overlay etcetera that are available to folks on Grand Avenue, I don't think this is an unreasonable sort of pedestrian issue, pedestrian isn't just a pedestrian, there's a lot bigger conversation that goes around here. And I think that if there's concerns for the egress, then hopefully city staff will address that during site plan review, if not already done during site plan review. I just, I, I dissented to the, to the rest, I, I don't think this is that, that significant an impact. And I would hope that we would think critically about all the uses, all the users of the use when we think about the change in use for any commercial park, thank you.
Is there additional comments from Commissioners, Commissioner Hood, I saw you had your hand up and then you put it down.
Thank you Chair, I was just laughering on to say, no additional comments, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Baker, coming back to you, is there anything else you'd like to add? Commissioner Baker, coming back to you, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I appreciate my fellow colleagues speaking of that was going to be the gist of what I said, so thank you, nothing else.
Thank you. So there, if there's no additional discussions on the motion coming out of committee, Ms. Langer, could we get a roll call?
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Joy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
No.
Commissioner McMurtry?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Tagia?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Want to oppose?
All right, so that motion is approved for a conditional use permit at 733 Grand. Commissioner Baker, I believe that's the end of your report? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Com Plan Committee, Commissioner Grill?
This is Commissioner Grill, so we had our meeting canceled for May 26, but we do have a meeting added to our agenda for June 2, and it is a study of the proposed amendments to the open space lot specification standards on the Ford site, and so this is that amenity space on the properties. So that will be on the agenda for June 2, and so our meeting was canceled, but for the 26th, but moved to the 2nd, and that is all we have for Com Plan Neighborhood Planning.
Thank you for the update. Moving on to Transportation Committee, Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our meeting, due to the holiday on Monday, our meeting was moved to June 14, so there's not an agenda at this time, but it will be at 4:30 on June 14, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Communication Nominations, Commissioner Underwood, if she's still on? I don't believe she is, is there an update on Communications and Nominations?
Chair, there's not an update.
Thank you. Task Force Liaison Report, so I was trying to, Commissioner DeJoy first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Hillcrest Community Advisory Committee met on May 18, and the bulk of our meeting was to discuss and to review our community engagement. To date, we have had 168 folks engaged in the planning for the master plan, the Hillcrest Redevelopment Master Plan. Of those folks, 77% were BIPOC individuals, and that was mostly at the pop-ups. Let's see, we, the Port Authority also had an event on, actually, it was two. It was continuing the community conversations, the first one was on Saturday, May 22, from 9 until noon, and that was held at the Hayden Heights Rec Center. That was co-sponsored by the St. Paul Port Authority, the District 2 Planning Council, and Council Member Nelsie Yang. Then a second one was held via Zoom on Tuesday, May 25, from 5:30 to 7:30. So we haven't gotten the results yet from those two events, but I'm sure we'll be talking about them at our next meeting, which is scheduled for June 15. And that's my report.
Thank you, any questions for Commissioner DeJoy? Commissioner Grill, would you like to provide an update on your task force?
Yep, the Station Area Planning Task Force next meeting is June 8 at 6 PM, and the agenda is yet to be posted.
Okay, thank you. And so we'll move on to old business, new business, or items that Commissioners would like to be added to the next agenda or to discuss. All right, so then that will conclude the May 28, 2021 St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Thanks, everybody, for joining, thanks, everybody from the public who came to provide testimony. Thank you to the Commissioners for your thoughtful engagement with the individuals who came to provide testimony. I look forward to continuing to work on the homeless study with you, and have a good weekend and enjoy the weather, it's nice out.
Thanks, everyone.
Good day, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.